Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen being held in the Town House Auditorium on October 1st, 2024 at 2:00 p.m. The meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the flag.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Can everybody hear us okay with the fan running? Dave, can you hear us all right? Okay.
Is anyone else recording the meeting other than us? We don't see anybody. Okay. The purpose of today's, we've got a couple of things on the agenda. The main purpose of today's meeting is to decide regarding an appeal on the Garvey versus Hampden lawsuit, self-storage lawsuit. The appeal closes on April 8th, I believe, or opportunity to appeal if we decide to do that. As it stands now, the land court judge has found in favor of the plaintiff, Garvey self, I guess Hampden LLC has self-storage, has found in favor of the plaintiffs, and has remanded the case back to the planning board to, as they've ordered, to consider whether after, remanded back to the planning board to hold a lawfully noticed public proceeding after the board shall expeditiously issue the special permit requested by the plaintiffs after considering whether imposition of reasonable conditions is warranted, including the 21 conditions approved in the decision under review. The question that was, we've met with our attorney in executive session on Monday evening. Our attorney recommends, advises that an appeal would be difficult in less than a 50 chance of winning it. The plaintiff's attorney has reported to our attorney that if we go forward with the appeal, they will seek to have attorney's fees and other awards to pay for their attorney's fees if we appeal. And so we have to make a decision. The other thing we have to, and has to be determined, and there's a lot of confusion about, and our attorney has spoken to several other attorneys, how does the board do this? There's a different makeup of the board. Two of the members of the board have never heard any evidence in the case, and exactly how does the judge think this would proceed if they, because he says you can impose reasonable conditions, including the 21 conditions. So technically, they could have put other conditions on it, but how do you put the other conditions on if you haven't heard any evidence? So we need to figure that out. So our attorney thinks that the cost of an appeal for us would be about $50,000. If we lose the appeal, there's a chance, more than a reasonable chance, I guess, he says, that they might get attorney's fees. So that's the decision we need to make, and the deadline is the 8th of April. Our attorney's, obviously, August. Our attorney is on vacation until Monday.
Other country, too.
Other country.
As well, town administrator. And Don, the point I think Brian did weigh in during the meeting, and Brian does have a lot of me as well.
Yeah.
And I think his baseline was he concurred with Jesse and Jesse's opinion.
Right. I'm sorry, John. I couldn't hear that.
That's what I'm saying. I want to appreciate that.
The town attorney, our town administrator.
Right. Yeah, about the chances of winning the appeal.
You said less than.
Feel less than 50%.
Twenty-five.
Yeah?
Twenty-five.
He wouldn't give us enough.
Okay.
So, can we come up by the board?
And I just have one other question. If the, and this goes back to my days on planning, Judge Howard said that the applicant at one time could sue for three times the damages.
They're saying double.
They're saying double.
Right.
Aren't there different, different types of cases have different amounts?
And I don't know, you know, this was, this was a while. So I just, so they had said double.
I think workplace things are trouble damages, Don.
What your attorney.
Said double.
The areas of concern that we had were if we seek clarification from the judge on the makeup of the planning board and their ability to reissue, oversee, they don't, they don't even have majority of the board that was on the board at that time. So the clarification we needed from the judge was, can they reasonably hear the hearing? Being nobody was there for the evidentiary part of it. And the fact that if we seek clarification, we lose the appeal window as well. But I believe our town attorney said he could put in for an appeal with a clarification note in the appeal, and I'm not sure how that works since our attorneys are out of country until Monday.
Didn't, didn't I hear Don say that the order said that the planning board should have a legal hearing or a legal process?
Right.
So the new board would look at the proposal. I mean, you can't have a board that doesn't exist do anything. So the new board would look at the package, and that would be, it would be a new hearing, I would think, that with the current board.
Would it be a new hearing, or it would say re-hear?
It'd have to be a new hearing.
Right, and that was the question before, when new members came on, they had to get caught up to speed and watch all the.
Let me read what the judge, okay. Said that it's, order that the decision of the board of December 22nd, 2022 is hereby annulled, is further ordered and remanded to the board for a lawfully noticed public proceeding, after which the board shall expeditiously issue the special permit requested by the plaintiff after considering whether imposition of reasonable conditions is warranted, including the 21 conditions approved in the decision under review.
Right. So.
It's an over-hearing?
No, it just hasn't been legally noted.
Right, legally noted, it can be, just a, it doesn't have to be a public, I don't.
Oh, you think it's just a post-in-meeting?
Yes, yes.
And so then, then, but then if one of the other newer members says, well, you know what, I want to add this condition.
And that would be okay?
Well, yeah, we don't know if that's what he really means or not. That's the clarification, and then we're trying to find.
It says reasonable conditions, so the board would have to vote on conditions that they find reasonable.
And additional. Yeah, because the 21s still stand.
Yeah, well, 20, no, they would, the client would have to vote to do that 21.
They'll stand, from what I read on that.
You did say addition to, right?
Right, what condition, whether imposition of reasonable conditions were, including the 21 conditions. So if they're warranted, they, the other.
If they're still warrant, yeah.
If still, the members may say, you know, I don't think we need to put in an eight-foot fence. I don't know what the, what the thing is, but you know.
I do see those as two separate things, and I think that's our quandary right here. Is the appeal and the makeup of the board conflated together? That's kind of the problem we have here. And I look at the fact that we've got advice from, basically, we're very fortunate that our town administrator has a law background, municipal background.
Yeah.
And also concurred with the town attorney, a well-respected jurist, as he's told us, a process that went through without any defect in the process. Again, his point is that the appeal is based on the process, not the merits of the case. Did the judge screw up somewhere along the way? And his point is, it was meticulous, they did a visit to the site, it's going to be extremely unusual for the appellate court to overturn this jurist. This isn't a one-year guy. This is somebody who has been to appellate and not been overturned. So do we encumber the town's money on something we think has very little chance of success?
So that's the next question. I'm speaking from advisory. My question is, is about how much more, we spent 50 about right now?
I don't really know if we summed up Jesse's things. I would say, we had a break over private guys, I would think. Don, we're building a 200, 300 range for his time, something like that.
Yeah.
I would think maybe 20, 25.
Twenty, probably 25. My, my, my concern is too. I, I understand the prospects of losing the case, but I think we need to clarify what the judge exactly wants us to do on this before we go do something and it gets appealed, we end up in court again because the plaintiff doesn't want those conditions. If someone has additional conditions.
Oh, yes.
You know what I mean? You know, if the new, if the new board says, I want to add these four other conditions, and the plaintiff may say, I don't want those conditions, and then we're back in court again for that. So we need clarification. So I think if we file for an appeal, we can always withdraw that appeal once we figure out what needs to be done.
I, I, see, now you're asking the judge to guide you on what conditions the duly-elected planning board can get away with putting on, which seems odd to me, rather than just letting these qualified people just do what they feel is the right thing to do.
Except they haven't heard the evidence.
Well, the evidence is the, is the, the project they, they're going to have a meeting or hearing where they get to look at the plans and talk to the applicants.
I guess three out of the five are familiar with the case from a plaintiff's perspective.
Maybe fresh eyes aren't the worst thing in the world.
No, 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 I'm not arguing.
It was.
I mean, this is, you know, I've been on ZBAA for years. We commonly get this, where somebody else with the building inspector, the planning board, whoever, has dealt with this, and they're not happy, and they come to us to, and we have to review everything and use our best judgment.
And that is the avenue, right? If the plaintiff didn't like the additional.
You could, you could appeal to ZBAA, or you could go back to.
Okay.
Because based on our conversation with our attorney on Monday, that he thought if we did the appeal, because it's within our rights legally to proceed with an appeal, while he put in for clarification during that appeal process, once the clarification came back, we could withdraw the appeal. It's more of less, we're trying to not lose the right, we don't have time for clarification.
Right, you're saying obviously.
Right, you know, next week, we don't have time for a clarification of the order.
What clarification would you get from the judge that would cause you to keep the appeal?
Number one, what, number one, you have two people on the board who have never even, never, don't know anything about the case. And the Mullen rule says you can't vote on a case unless you've been to an inventory hearing.
And they only have four members.
Well, you only can have one miss of a meeting. So they've had all misses of meetings. Number two, by, by saying reasonable conditions, does it mean we can add other conditions or not add other conditions? And the main concern is the vote of the people who haven't heard the case.
You need a supermajority now, right?
You need a supermajority.
I understand the process questions. I'm trying to figure out what clarification the judge would give you that he would say, no, that's unacceptable, we want to appeal. No matter what he tells you, as far as the process goes, would that cause you to?
No, no, but, but if we don't preserve our right to appeal.
We lose it.
We lose it.
Okay. What clarification would cause you to want to appeal? Because it looks a little unattractive to appeal. So I'm, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just not understanding why you would file an appeal and what would cause you to want to, can you get a clarification without filing an appeal?
No. Well, because the time will run out.
Because the time will run out. We could, we had more time.
Impossible the judge could come back in two days and say, this is what I meant. Is it possible? Sure. Tough without the attorney asking him that from wherever he is.
Is there anything the judge could tell you? Right now, it sounds like it's not an attractive thing to appeal. Is there anything, when you ask for clarification, that the judge could tell you, you're going to have to do for process, that would cause you to want to go forward with an appeal? I can't think of anything.
I see the, the ruling, and I understand Don's point, but I read the ruling, the judge ordered the special permit granted. You could have five new people on the board, and he's telling you, sign off, grant that special permit.
I agree with you. The board is, whatever the board is today, it's a brand-new hearing, meeting, whatever.
Right. He's looked at the evidence, grant the spec. Now, maybe the new people can look at it for new conditions or additional, or look at the body, whatever. But I think he's telling, I don't care if you have five new people there, grant the special permit.
I, I agree with you. There's no way that you can have the old board exist.
I suppose we could have one member resign, pick up another member, yeah. Yeah, but I see it as he just, he is ordering the special permit to be granted.
Yeah, that's, that's what I read. That's kind of what I talked you as.
Yeah, and so I can't figure out what he would do as far as, how far you could go into conditions and that type of guidance that he might give you. I can't think of any answers that would cause you to want to spend the 50 grand to appeal.
So the reasonable conditions are what he's saying. Any reasonable, you know, I guess you can't ask for the boom, but the 21 will stay. In other words, you know, you have.
So what if they add four more or five more?
That's, that's always the test.
And that's, then the applicant in turn can say, no, we're going to appeal this.
Yes, Dr. Court.
So I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I don't have that crystal ball. It's a tough spot for it.
I mean, I've never read the 21 conditions, but I got to think they're probably pretty thorough as they stand.
They're pretty comprehensive, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
I can't recall too many projects that had that many conditions on them in a planning, obviously conservation is different, but. So the question before the board is, Don said, are we taking a flyer and appealing it with the thought that we can withdraw later?
Is there a motion of some type?
I don't think it's worth committing the town's resources to that. We've got pretty good legal opinions from both our person and our legal team that this is not something we, that's going to benefit the town.
I mean, I'm torn. I understand the, the ruling from the judge, and obviously he knows more than I do, but you know, I think we owe it to the residents to appeal based on the community input at hearings and in public comment.
A few angry neighbors have cost us a lot of money on a project that I think probably, if you read the zoning, should have been in the byway.
I mean, not, it'll bring revenue to the town, we know that, but again, I understand, I understand the concerns because I lived there.
We had a project similar to this several years ago, and Don recalls, with the school issue, where we had advice and it's a, it's a lawsuit that you feel is the right thing to do, but legally, it may not work out. And after $100,000, it didn't work out. That one was, I think, supported by a much larger community outreach. This one, I don't know. I don't know if you would go and ask a person on Chapin Road or South Munson, you know, we could especially, we could potentially be exposed to 50, $100,000, say we can't withdraw, they get the thing, like, well, thanks for the sidewalk you didn't put in because we spent it on this potentially frivolous lawsuit. We're the stewards of the town.
We are the stewards of the town, and there's an aquifer there, and that's the other issue that's involved.
The judge apparently didn't agree with that as a threat, but.
He didn't agree with that because we didn't present evidence to the contrary.
This, this is more of a case of people who houses next to commercial land who are known.
It wasn't commercial land then, it was.
It was a farm.
It was a farm.
And the owners of the farm, be clear, the Sibaldies are the ones who changed it to business, not the new owners. This was Sibaldies. Well, I think it was misrepresented about that.
Two-thirds of the town meeting agreed.
Right. Perhaps if they didn't, after this whole thing went, perhaps the, somebody should have put a motion forward to take self-storage out of the table of uses. So if it came back, it wouldn't be a lot.
And, and that's a possibility. You know, you have to, again, as, as time goes on, you look back and you revise, you need to keep revising those only guidelines.
But again, Monday morning quarterbacking, I don't know, I think Don's point is here, where, what is the board going to do?
It's a tough decision. I can say that. I can only say it, hate to spend the extra money and then lose that decision and then have the applicant come back and sue for two times the damage. So whatever, whatever that means.
I mean, I know we've been, we've been told you can withdraw the appeal. Is there a cost? Because now the other person has spent money defending the appeal up to that point, would they be allowed to? Look, I spent money in the withdrawal, that's not, I don't know enough about it. I've only watched five episodes of Law and Order, they didn't cover it. I just go back, Craig's point, it's, it's 50/50. There's this side and that side, and they're both strong sides. But you make a good point.
I can't figure the advantage of filing the appeal if you're not planning on going through with it.
Buying time for the judge's clarity, but I don't think.
I think that.
Well, the appeal, the reason you would appeal is to overturn the judge's decision.
Right, but we, we know that's, our counsel has been that that's probably low probability.
Right.
So somewhere between 1% and 49.9%.
And to be honest, this is a public record, and they could say, look, you even talked about this was technically maybe a frivolous appeal, and that might not be viewed well.
You, you're in a hard spot, and I'm going to say that as a governmental body, I, I look to, you know, respect those decisions by the judge. It, it may not bode well for the town to come back and say, you know, we're repealing your decision, maybe we go back and just ask for clarification. And if you don't appeal, if you ask for, I, I understand you lose, then lose your chance for appeal.
Well, there's one other thing we can do, and that is, we have until the 8th. Jesse is away, but perhaps there is somebody in his office that can ask that judge for clarification. Don could post another meeting for the 7th, basically, and say, look, we're going to wait for clarification and say, Your Honor, when the planning board is not the same planning board, how do we handle this?
Okay.
And if they provide a path going forward, Dick is going to say, what does that, how's that change what you're doing?
That, that sounds like a wonderful question because there is some ambiguity. I just, I'm not sure why you need the appeal to ask the question.
No, we don't. And my point is, we have until the 7th. Technically, we could say, okay, we have, you know, a chance to hopefully get clarification from Judge Smith, you know, in the next five business days before we actually have to make the hard decision. Although I don't know how long it takes to file an appeal, I mean, you have to give, I think, lawyers a date at least, put the paperwork together, whatever. I don't know, yeah, so. If the question before the board is, why are we waiting to say yes or no, is just understanding how the judge plans this to happen, maybe take a couple of days and think about it, and Don said, okay, we're going to continue this and, you know, make the call on, on, I don't know, what is that, Wednesday next week or something?
The 9th is the word.
Yeah, so I think the 8th, with 31 days in July, 30 days would be the 8th.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So we might post again for the 7th, hoping we get a clarification on 5th or 6th from Judge Smith, which might give clarity to the board on how we meant that to be implemented. That's an option. We don't, we have to vote the appeal prior to 30 days of expiry. You could say, let's task Jesse Monday, Tuesday to try and get some, Jesse and Brian get some clarity.
They'll be back Monday.
Yeah, I think both will, so.
Yeah.
That's an option.
For the 7th.
Sure.
Okay, we'll continue this to the 7th.
Basically, yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, the point of the board is, we need a little more information, let's take the opportunity to get it.
All right. We'll continue this to the 7th, and I'll, I'll send an email right today. Jesse will get it, you'll, you'll get it, you'll know.
Can I ask a question? Can you guys hear me?
Can you pass somebody in the office?
Madison, yeah.
Can I just ask a question about the clarification?
Yeah.
So we've got two members that aren't involved, so I feel a little torn because we've got one member who wasn't on the board, but is very familiar with the opposing side of the special permit case, and I just want to make sure that we handle that correctly and appropriately. And my second question is, our other member, who may not be familiar with the case, we have to get up to speed, I just want to make sure that we have like a strong line on how we're sharing information with them without sharing, like adding things to the record, just because it's gone, gone on for so long.
Yeah, I see.
What member, what member do you mean, Madison?
So David wasn't on the board, and.
Right.
But Pat was a member of the community who was against storage units. So I just want to be, make sure we're in line with how we're handling all this.
Yeah, the refuse himself, yeah. That's a question. That's why we paid Jesse and Brian the big bucks.
All right, I'll send Jesse an email. I'll tell Mrs. Davenport to defer supper, and I'll type the email.
If you're waiting till 2:00 in the morning? I mean, you don't know where he is.
All right, thank you, Madison.
All right, so we're going to post, you want to make another afternoon next week as well?
Yeah.
Craig, any problem with the 7th?
I don't know yet.
Still working on the 2nd.
I've got a couple of appointments in the morning, but.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do an evening?
You guys don't have a meeting next week, right? It's not until.
The following.
Don, the only thing I like about, it does give the staff, if we meet at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, and Howard to get something done in that day, send a note out or whatever, kickstart it. If there's a process we're going to move, it does give them an hour before closing business to do something on Wednesday. You know, the reason I would say, you know.
What are you talking about?
2:00.
2:00 or 3:00 o'clock on Wednesdays, I like it.
3:00 or 2:00?
2:00.
2:00 on Wednesday.
All right.
You got that, Warren?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, the town, the fall town meeting, now the next fall town meeting, the moderator is unavailable on the 21st. They would like to move it to Saturday so Dick couldn't be there. That's what he said.
Were you a moderator at some point?
He can't have a moderator. And the, the next Monday, I'm actually landing at Bradley at 4:00 on that Monday.
All right, so start the town meeting at 3:00?
Whatever you want to do.
Pending delays, because there's delays everywhere.
He's suggesting, he could get someone else to do it on the 21st.
It's easy. The, the process, if the moderator's unavailable, is the town meeting elects a moderator. Obviously, you, you try to set that up and orchestrate it ahead of time, but yeah, it's not that, it's not that out of process.
And this is the year we're talking, are we talking doing consent or?
Not for the fall.
Not for the fall.
Not for the fall. We're talking about do maybe electronic and then.
The thing, the thing is, so this is going to be a pretty busy town meeting, because we're going to, pretty active town meeting, because we're going to have the, I guess, senior center, and we're going to have a couple of issues regarding changing, pointed to elected, people going to need to vote on that, so that might be a little bit of a controversy. I don't know what else we're going to have on that.
Battery storage.
Battery storage.
I think it'd be good to have the A-team on.
You know, so.
The budget part of it is a little bit complicated because we haven't decided what we're doing with the million and a half for the water project.
Right.
That's where I'm, I'm a little concerned about the 28th, because usually, the tax rate stuff is the run-up. I'm kind of busy right up to the last minute, and I'm going to be out of time for five days before the meeting. So just from a selfish point of view, that, that makes me nervous.
Well, it sounds like we may not have clarity even for the 21st, even as we're still getting our numbers together, but we can't. But we can't even push it another week as we run into the presidential election.
Next week, that next week is the election.
Right.
Well, the. Presidential election.
You, we can't, might not have the numbers for what?
Well, I wonder if you're, you know, we talked about getting all the things together even for the 21st, is there a problem doing that?
Not if we have all the warrant article dollar amounts early enough.
Okay, well, we'll get them early enough, but still have the meeting on the 20th. We, you know, we plan and every, having everything ready before you leave, so you're not like coming back to, what am I doing?
So, advisory, if you did the 28th, then you're looking at, again, advisory meeting a couple of weeks before that.
Right. Okay, so.
So, we, when I say that.
Well, I think, you know, as Don said, you know, with so much going on, we need the A-team, you know, doing all the work here, so no.
Was it Tuesday out of the question for a town meeting?
Not for a fall town meeting, no.
The 22nd, you think it was 27?
22nd or 29?
Well, busy away the 21st or that week, Don.
He was coming back the 21st, I thought. And then he's coming back the 28th, so he.
Yeah, they run the 23rd, come back on the 28th.
Right, at 4:00 and Rick comes back, I think he's going to be on vacation. That's, I saw him yesterday, so.
Well, he's, Rick's going to be on vacation the 22nd.
Won't be home until the 22nd.
Correct.
I don't get home until the 22nd.
Do you think if you prepped everything up ahead of time, you'd be okay with the 28th?
Do my best if Southwest doesn't fail me. Fortunately, they're on Windows 3.1, so I don't talk about logic.
True.
So, Tuesday's out of the question, like the 29th, just to give him some leeway?
I, I'm fine with me too.
Actually, I will tell you, the 29th works better because of the 14-day thing because the 14th is a legal holiday, I believe. So, you advisory could have their meeting on the 15th and make the two-week thing.
It's not the worst idea I've ever heard.
Man, I'd, I'd rather be no questions whether you make it or not.
Right, right.
Well, they have the data prep.
Yeah, all right. So, make a motion to schedule the fall town meeting for October 29th.
Can we still close on the 30th of September? Close the warrant?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can always reopen as we need to.
Well, yeah. I'd rather, I'd like not to do like we did last time and keep reopening the warrants if we, if we vote save or closing it on the 30th. And that's a hard deadline.
Yeah, I just don't think we should do that, yeah, we haven't even sent out a note to departments with this date and.
We could do it on Thursday and have Halloween costumes.
Right. Again, anyhow, a motion for the 29th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well.
That only took a minute.
We made a decision. Okay, we got to sign the warrant for the primary.
Reconsideration, the last motion?
We don't have to, yeah.
You say you want a reconsideration?
Reconsideration, please, thank you.
Do we have to sign all of these?
Yes, please.
What are all these lines? Well, that's, look, if there's more people.
There's more than three. I signed more than once, I've done that.
All right.
Any other business?
Right, any other business to come before the board?